Everything going as we are live tonight for this big event.
So, good evening. At this time, we would like to call the, to order the city council meeting for January 3rd, 2017. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wobak.
Here.
Eight present.
Well, welcome, everyone. This is a special meeting that we have when we swear in every two years, new councilmembers, and elect our new mayor and vice mayor. And I'd first like to acknowledge as many of the officials that we have in attendance, as we've managed to spot, but I'm afraid we're going to come short on this. So, what I'd like to do is first acknowledge the former mayors in attendance. Let me just read them off as a group because the applause goes on. Former mayors Judy Kleinberg, Nancy Shepherd, Laney Wheeler, and Joe Semidion. Ah, and Betsy Bechtel. So, so this part of the trick, all the people who get left off get special applause. So, and we also have a number of other officials. And I, please help us out, as we did with former Mayor Bechtel, to point out who we're omitting. But from the East Palo Alto City Council, we have Councilmember Ruben Abrica and Mayor Larry Moody. We also have, from the school board, Jennifer DeBrienza, and former school board members Camille Townsend and Suzie Richardson. And then, we'd like to just acknowledge, as a group, we have a number of our board and commission members. And rather than error in omitting them, can all board and commissioner members please rise? And who have I left off? Pardon me?
Oh, Steve Scharf from Cupertino.
Oh, and councilmember, or mayor, or councilman, Steve Scharf from Cupertino. Welcome. All right. Now, we get on to our real business. And the most important item tonight, which is the swearing in of new city council members. And so, Beth Minor, our clerk, would you like to take the lead? I understand that County Supervisor Semidion is going to do the honors with one of our newly elected or reelected officials.
Yes, he is. Joe, if you'll come up.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I was Niss.
So far, so good. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sweetie. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you for the privilege, Mr. Mayor.
If I can call Lydia Koo up? If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lydia Koo.
I, Lydia Koo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Welcome to the council. Raise your right hand. I, Adrian Fine.
I, Adrian Fine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, and welcome. Greg, come on up. Repeat after me. I, Greg Tanaka.
I, Greg Tanaka.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
The Charter of the City of Palo Alto.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.[1125.72][1125.82][S17. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion.[1128.62][1128.72][S17. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully.[1131.92][1132.02][S17. That I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties.[1134.42][1134.52][S17. Discharge the duties.[1135.32][1135.32][S14. Upon which I am about to enter.[1136.82][1137.52][S17. Upon the duties which I'm about to enter. Congratulations, and welcome.
At this time, we'd like to welcome the new councilmembers to take their seats at the dais, and those of us who are departing will do so.
Are you moving over, or are you going to stand?
Anywhere you want. Doesn't matter. Come sit here. Take the mayor's seat. Go for it. Where's Lydia? Oh, there you are. Well, congratulations, everyone, and thanks for joining us up here. The next order of business is the election of mayor and vice mayor for 2017. And we'll proceed as follows. First, I will collect nominations from councilmembers for the position of mayor. Councilmembers may nominate themselves or another councilmember, and no second is required. After collecting the nominations, I will invite people to speak in the following order. Councilmembers who made a nomination may speak to the nomination, and then councilmembers who are nominated may speak if they wish. Any other councilmember may comment, and members of the public, of course, will be heard. Then we will vote, and then we'll redo the process over again for vice mayor. So, the floor is now open for nominations for mayor. Councilmember Phil Seth?
I nominate Vice Mayor Greg Scharf for mayor. Greg is one of our longest-tenured and most experienced councilmembers, including past experience as mayor. He has a strong understanding of policy and city government, and a longtime advocate for infrastructure, local retail, and fiscal responsibility. Greg is the logical choice for this council tonight. This council will be the last one with nine members, and with a group this size, it's natural to anticipate some divisions. But I believe there's a broad consensus available because there is broad consensus in the community around addressing our transportation and traffic issues, sensible housing growth that addresses the heavy cost of living here while respecting the capacity of our schools, services, and infrastructure, supporting our local retail and personal services, continuing to move forward on sustainability independent of federal activity, and protecting our neighborhoods and the physical attractiveness of our city and our quality of life here. Survey after survey shows that these things are the things a majority of Palo Alto residents want, and all of us have talked about them as we stood for office. And Greg understands all these things. And as leader of the council, he'll be in a position to lead us to this consensus with a council that works together to do the community's business. For all these reasons, I nominate Greg Scharf to be the next mayor of Palo Alto.
Councilmember Holman, I saw your light on.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Liz Niss as mayor. And do you want comments now?
Sure.
Since we started in that regard. Two years ago, Liz Niss did me the honor of nominating me for a mayor. And I feel it's very appropriate, given the current climate and current situation, that I nominate Liz, and I think Liz would serve the community very well. As then, Liz was the top vote getter, and so I think that's an appropriate measure of the community sentiment about leadership on the council. As then, we're coming out of also another difficult election period, and I believe that Liz has the unique experience and influence to bring the community together, bring the members of the council together on the dais. And with these perspectives, I'm very pleased to nominate Liz Niss for mayor.
Councilmember Niss, I saw your light on.
So, with gratefulness and gratitude, Karen, I accept your nomination but must decline it. I think going forward this year, and I think Eric Phil Seth has said it extremely well, this is a year when we have somebody with even more experience than I do sitting here for the last nine years. And Karen, I hope you'll nominate me again sometime. I would be delighted. But for this evening, I believe our best choice for tonight is going to be Councilmember Scharf. But once again, thank you so much for those very kind words. I appreciate it. And so does my family, who's sitting here probably is thinking, "This is unusual." Thank you all so much.
And I just wanted to thank both Councilmember Phil Seth and Councilmember Niss for those kind words. I don't see any other lights, so let me just look. It's a little hard over here. Oh, Councilmember Wobak?
I just wanted to say that I will also be supporting Vice Mayor Greg Scharf for mayor. I think you've done an excellent job as vice mayor this year. The experience that Councilmember Phil Seth spoke to, I don't need to repeat. We're all aware. And I think you'll do an excellent job leading the council through an important year ahead.
Well, thank you very much. Now, we'll move to the public.
Greg, before you, before you do get to a vote, would you remind new members which light to push for?
Yes.
What reason?
Yes. If I'm not seeing new lights from the new member, there's a little silver button that you can just push up and down. And if I don't see you, you know, go ahead and, because it's actually a little hard to see it over there. I will, yeah.
So, you go to the public first?
No, I'm, I wanted to finish councilmembers first. I just didn't see any more lights. So, Adrian?
Thank you very much. I'll be quick. So, Councilmember Scharf, as I know him, has been generous of spirit and information, but he's also acute, direct, and to the point. I believe he will be a good leader for our city in getting our business done, and that's what we can ask of him, and I will be there to support him.
Thank you. Tom, you had your light on?
Okay. First of all, I just want to say welcome to the new councilmembers. I think it's kind of an interesting transition, having gone through it. You're out there being competitive, campaigning, and now you join the fellowship of nine, and you get to be collaborative and work with us for the betterment of the city. So, welcome aboard. I support the nomination of Greg because I think, I think he will uphold kind of basic tenets of good government. We just heard, you know, the oath to follow the charter of the city. And, you know, the mayor is really one of nine councilmembers with really no more power than the other nine. And, you know, Greg, I guess I'd ask you in your comments just to kind of reaffirm, you know, that some of those things of good governance, which I think you support, kind of openness and transparency, you know, we generally are together on a lot of items, but, you know, we are a divided council on other items. And so, I expect you'll be fair, and you'll be transparent, and respectful. And because I believe that, I support the nomination.
Well, thank you, Tom, and you can be assured that all the things you just said I would aspire to do. So, now, are any speakers from, Tom? Oh, Eric, sorry. Greg?
I have trouble with the name Greg.
Actually, I guess there's a conservation of Gregs, because one Greg just stepped down, and another Greg stepped up. So, so I, too, also be supporting Vice Mayor as mayor. I got to know you for quite some time now. I thought you were a very effective mayor last time. I seen you run this meeting very, very well, and I think that's needed. I think you bring people together, and you have my support.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone I'm missing? Lydia?
So, thank you. And I do want to say that this 2016, to the elections and the campaign, was a very tough time. And so, I do support your nomination, and would hope that, moving forward, that we remember that you can nurture our residents here. And I did, when I was campaigning, campaigned with a, the organizational chart of Palo Alto, which my husband has. And I really want to remind that we're here as councilmembers to serve the residents of Palo Alto. Honey, St. Clair, could you please bring it up and give it to David over here just as a reminder? I think that's a very, you do, right? Yeah. It's, it's not easy to find on the, on the website, but it is in the, in the operating budget site. So, again, just want to remind. I ran with that, took it with me everywhere I went, and I just want to bring it back so that we're remembering that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I'll also be supporting the nomination. And I felt it a real honor and almost a duty, if you will, to be respectful and dutiful, to nominate Councilmember Niss as mayor, and understanding the declining of that nomination. But, but I appreciate the comments in return. But I will be supporting the nomination. And will we have comments, an opportunity to make comments welcoming other councilmembers and new councilmembers, or now or anytime?
Why don't you just do it now? We can conserve the time.
Okay. So, I do want to welcome, we have obviously three new councilmembers, some that are new to the dais, and some that have been sitting at this dais for some period of time. And, you know, as we know, that there are a lot of common issues in the public, a lot that have captured the public's attention. And the solutions to those have gotten varied, varied response. And so, we will not always agree on the solutions. We will not always agree on the issues. We will not always be allies on the issues, but we will always be colleagues. For the next two years, we will be colleagues. And with that in mind, I look forward to the next three years of us directing the issues that face this community, as some of them as a result of our great success as a community. So, I look forward to addressing those issues directly, head-on, and with great perseverance. So, welcome to our new colleagues.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? It's now, all right. With that, do we have any? With that, do we have any cards from the public? So, no cards on the public. Since there's only one on me, I'm just going to ask you to vote on the board, and the way you vote on the board is you push the green button if you're in favor and the red button if you're opposed. Or the yellow button if you want to abstain, but we don't do that at council. And that passes unanimously.
Yay!
Yes. So now, we'll take a moment. I'll just switch seats with Councilmember Tanaka.
Thank you. Thank you. So, it's actually traditional for the mayor-elect or elected to say a few words before, so that's what I wanted to do. So first of all, I wanted to thank my colleagues and the community for the trust you've placed in me, and I really appreciate Councilmember DuBois's comments. I thought they were apropos, and I totally agree with them. And I appreciate all the other kind words, and I wanted to thank all of you for supporting me and the community, and I wanted to welcome the new council members. I wanted to say that being mayor of Palo Alto is an honor. It's a real honor. In fact, as a lot of former mayors have told me, and I can tell you this myself, having served once as mayor, it's the one thing when you go to an event that people are like, "Oh, you're the former mayor of Palo Alto?" It's very well thought of Palo Alto regionally, and it's really an honor. So, I wanted to say we have really an extraordinary community here, from our amazing citizen engagement, frankly, to the number of libraries we have. You know, it's just amazing. To the quality of our city staff, and we don't really talk enough about the quality of our city staff, and I wanted to say we have an extraordinary staff, and they work extremely hard on behalf of the citizens of Palo Alto. Palo Alto is just such a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family, and an important component of that is the quality of the city services we have. And the quality of the city services is only as good as our city staff. And I wanted to highlight the city staff in that I've noticed over the last couple of years, really, how hard they work, how many late hours they put in, and how unsung they are in terms of the press and in terms of the community. And I just wanted to do a real shout-out to the city staff. The other thing is, I wanted to say is, I know it was a tough election that did elicit a lot of strong feelings and statements. However, I know all of you fairly well up here, the new council members as well as the old council members. And I want to say to everyone here, Palo Alto is extremely lucky to have each of you as council members. You all are amazingly skilled and bring a lot to this community, and your dedication and service to the community is very impressive. I would ask that we all come together as colleagues and frankly, hopefully, friends. I want to tell you that being on council is supposed to be fun. You're supposed to all enjoy it. So, let's all work together, let's have fun. If you don't know someone well on council, go out and have coffee with them, or go have a drink, get to know each other, become friends. And I hope we can all work together, frankly, to compromise, to build consensus, and to continue to solve the challenges we face, and frankly, the problems that will undoubtedly arise this year. My experience as a council member over the last seven years now, seven years, is that we, as I sit here today, we don't foresee the issues that are going to pop up and that arise, and that there will undoubtedly be those challenges that come up. So, there are a lot of really important things I think we need to get done this year, and things we need to lay the groundwork for. First of all, this will be the third year of making the comp plan a priority, if we make it a priority. So clearly, we need to get the comp plan done and be done with that. We also need to finish, we need to focus on fully implementing our infrastructure plan and to continue focus on ensuring that Palo Alto is fiscally sound. This will require some discipline with the budget as new source and new sources of revenue, and we also need to continue to focus on relieving congestion, funding the TMA, and making it effective. The other thing I really wanted to focus on was that Measure B is passed, and there's now significant money for transportation that should come to Palo Alto. However, we as a council, frankly, need to focus on making sure we get our fair share of that money. They don't necessarily just hand it over. So, that's something we need to do. And part of that, frankly, is that we need to start thinking about grade separations. Within Measure B, there was a lot of grade separation money, and if we don't make it shovel-ready, we don't have a plan for the community, we won't get the money, somebody else will. So we need to really focus on doing that. So now is the time for the community to have realistic discussions, frankly, about how we achieve grade separations in a way that enhances the community. And I think these could be some difficult conversations, but I think we need to start those conversations and start having them. Also, likewise with the passage of Measure A, there should be substantial funding for affordable housing. We need to focus on ensuring that we move forward with at least one affordable housing project this year, and that we address the housing needs of our community. And finally, the primary job of the mayor is meeting management. I know all of you want to have meetings that end by 11:00 but are productive and focused, and yet have a thorough examination of the issues that come before us. These are contradictory goals, we know that. So, I think however we can do it, but I'm going to need all of your help, and that means suggestions, ways to streamline the meetings, make it work. Now, at Policy and Services, which Tom chaired, at the suggestion of the city manager, the committee's recommended that we have a second council retreat that focuses on facilitating these type of governance issues. Again, on the one hand, it is another meeting, probably a Saturday meeting, but I believe along with my colleagues on PNS, this is a good way to build consensus on how we can achieve this, and I think it's also a good way to onboard new council members, frankly, and to have a thorough discussion of governance and any concerns people have. And finally, with the national election, I do believe we as a city, a region, and a state need to be vigilant in support of our values should the need arise. And finally, I wanted to recognize my family for attending, my wife over there, and my daughter Emily, and my son Jason, right there in the thing. Thank you all for coming and supporting me tonight. So thank you for your support, and I look forward to a great 2017. And now we'll move on to the election of vice mayor. So, do we have any nominations for vice mayor? Councilmember Walback?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Liz Niss for vice mayor.
Do we have any other nominations for vice mayor? All right. Seeing none, Councilmember Walback, would you like to speak to your nomination?
I'd like to, briefly. Councilmember Liz Niss, as we know, is eminently qualified and experienced. She's a great ambassador for Palo Alto and a number of regional bodies where she represents us, and in all of the ad hoc communications that she participates in with neighbors and with council members from neighboring cities, to make sure that Palo Alto is respected, understood, and involved in the regional discussions on those issues that we can't solve on our own. She's also clearly and enthusiastically supported by the community, as we saw this fall. I think that she brings a calm, steady, and unifying voice rooted in tremendous understanding of Palo Alto and institutional memory, and it would be my pleasure to nominate her for vice mayor.
All right. Would anyone else like to say a few words? Councilmember Fine?
Thank you, mayor.
It has the wrong names up here, so it takes me a moment.
No worries. So Liz, I would also be happy to support you. You've served our community for decades, and you make me proud as a Palo Alton. You could have an entourage of 100 people doing your work, but I've always seen you do your own work, and that's a real honor to you. I think you'll anchor us in rich wisdom, and as Councilmember Walback said, in regional connections, will help our city solve some of our problems. As you said yourself in the campaign, experience matters.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes, I also support Councilmember Niss for vice mayor. I had a chance to campaign with you during the election, and I was dearly impressed. You're gracious, you're well-liked by everyone, you get things done. I can't think of a better choice for vice mayor, so you have my support.
I also would like to say a few words. I've known Councilmember Niss for a while now, and she is one of the most effective leaders we have regionally. In fact, she is going to be chair of the airboard. That is a huge accomplishment. I don't think we can tell you how huge accomplishment that is for a council member to achieve something like that. And that's because she is the most well-thought-of person regionally. She's extremely gracious, everyone likes Liz. In fact, if you noticed, our supervisor made a special effort to swear her in today, and that's a testament to how well Liz is liked regionally, and that is a huge benefit to Palo Alto. Whenever I need anything done regionally, I always talk to Liz about it, and I'll tell you, nine times out of 10, Liz can pull it off. So, I think Liz will be a great vice mayor, and she has my full support. Seeing no other further lights, if we could vote on the board? Oh, yeah, community. Do we have any? No, we don't have anything from the community. All right. If we could vote on the board. And that also passes unanimously.
Liz?
Liz, I'm talking, yes. Do you want to come sit over here first?
I'm okay right here. I'm kind of used to this. So, first of all, if I could just ask my family to stand up, and I will tell you what my granddaughter said, "What do you do on Monday nights for five or six hours?" So would you all stand up so I can recognize you? All of you who are sitting out here, and especially those who supported any of us during this past campaign, know the time, energy, and effort that this takes, and so you need your family's support to do this. This is a job that takes far more than five or six hours on Monday nights, and it takes more than either a Tuesday or Wednesday, and sometimes a Thursday night, and many days to this as well. And we do it cheerfully, and I think in good humor. Would you agree, Mark Berman, who's sitting in the front row, Assemblymember Mark Berman? It makes a difference, and having the support of the community, and I can feel the wonderful energy in here tonight. It is just terrific. It's very different, by the way, than when the energy is divided over some major issue. I think you've all come tonight to support a new council, a new council that has every intention and will work hard at it, working consensually, at working together, at respecting each other, and as one of my friends said in the past, the ability to disagree in public and go in the back room and be agreeable with each other as you step back. It's very important to be able to do that. It's very important to be able to speak of each other kindly in public as well. I think the public really appreciates that. Let me just mention two things that Mayor Scharf just brought up. One of them is regionality, and I would urge anyone who's new on the council and those who are continuing on, get involved regionally. I've said it many times, we're not an island. Larry Moody is here from East Palo Alto, I know Kirsten Keith is here from Menlo Park. We really do the best when we cross our borders and work together. So, you know, act locally, as they say, but do think regionally, and it will make a big difference. And I am delighted to be taking on the, what's called the Bay Area Air Quality Management District this year. I think that will be very beneficial and very advantageous for us here as a community. And secondly, I also want to say what Greg did about staff. Sitting here in the front is our staff, council, city manager, assistant city manager, head of utilities, these are the guys that make us run, they run the bus every day. We're not here to do that, and they do that. And I'd love it if you'd give them a big round of applause. The wheels on that bus do need to go round and round, so we're very appreciative. So thank you, colleagues, for supporting me. Welcome to the new council. Still a little short of women up here, I've noticed, but we're getting there. And wonderful of you all to come tonight. We know that you probably had other things to do on your Tuesday night, and we're grateful that you're here. Thank you all.
And now, the next order of business is the resolutions honoring the outgoing council members. I'm going to call items number three, four, and five at the same time, but we'll do it individually.
You want a general motion?
So, not yet. We'll probably take, yeah, let me just take a quick look at where we are on this. So, the first thing we'll do is, I think we go, I was looking for the... Ah, here we are. All right. So the first thing is, yes, would council members like to speak to the resolutions and comments of the outgoing council members? But first, we're going to ask people to speak, to read the resolution. So, we will do Councilmember Berman first, and I will read Councilmember Berman's. So first of all, Mark, I want to tell you, before I read your resolution, we're really going to miss you up here. It's been a real pleasure serving with you, and I'm really glad that you realized your dream of going to the assembly, and I know you're going to make us proud and do a great job there. So, "Resolution of the Council of the City of Palo Alto Expressing Appreciation for Outstanding Public Service to Mark Berman as Councilmember. Whereas Mark Berman served as Palo Alto City Councilmember from January 2013 through December 2016, and whereas Mark served on the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission, IBRC, the Council Infrastructure Committee, and the Campaign Committee for Yes on Measure B to raise the funds necessary to fully fund Palo Alto's $150 million infrastructure improvement plan, and whereas Mark worked closely with the environmental and faith-based communities and was the lead author of the Colleagues' Memo and Resolution Demanding that Calpers divest from fossil fuel companies, and whereas during his time on the city council, Mark chaired the Finance Committee in 2014 and worked with the Office of Management and Budget to create the Budget in Brief, which provides the public with a concise and easy-to-understand overview of Palo Alto's budget, increasing transparency and public awareness of how their money is spent, and whereas Mark opposed the vehicle habitation ban and made the motion to repeal the ban a year later. And whereas throughout his service, Mark has been a consistent advocate for more housing, bringing community members together to promote and encourage creative solutions to our housing shortfall, and whereas Mark co-authored colleagues' memos to raise the minimum wage in Palo Alto and to establish Palo Alto's Business Registry so we could begin collecting real data to assist council with making informed decisions about parking, transportation, and development in the future, and whereas Mark has been a strong advocate of Palo Alto's sustainability and climate action efforts, including co-authoring a colleagues' memo to encourage switching from natural gas appliances to appliances that use our carbon-neutral electricity, consistently defending and supporting policies that promote local renewable energy generation and finding creative solutions to promote more residential solar projects under Palo Alto's net energy metering cap, and whereas Mark's leadership on the city council exemplified service to the community with contributions that will be lasting value to the city of Palo Alto. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Palo Alto hereby commends the outstanding public service of Mark Berman, gratefully records both its appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens and businesses of this community for his meritorious service and commitment as a Palo Alto city council member, and wishes him luck as he serves as Assemblymember for the state of California's 24th Assembly District." So now we'll go to council members, if you wish to make any comments regarding Mark. Councilmember Walback?
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Berman, or rather, Assemblymember Berman, for being a friend, a mentor, a colleague for the last two years that we've served on council together. We didn't always agree. We did frequently, but we didn't always, and I appreciated your candor in private and your courtesy in public through all of those agreements and disagreements. You've served as a good example and reminder to myself to remember to bite my tongue once in a while, but to speak my mind when it's important, and I appreciate that. And I think that's, those are important lessons for all of us. I know that you'll take those skills to Sacramento, where you'll continue to serve us well, and I know that you'll be a friend to Palo Alto and to the region, helping us address, as we've discussed tonight, not only our local issues, but our regional issues, where we'll send Liz to tell you that we need some help. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Niss?
So, Mark, why don't you come and stand at the mic? Nobody can see you, and that's important. So, working with Mark has been a real pleasure. So, working with Mark has been a real pleasure. And rather than tout all the things you've done here, I was going to tell them a little about your background, because former Mayor Shepherd said tonight, and she told me once, that you had decided in the eighth grade you were going to run for state office. And so you started planning then. And I think that's probably true. So I know you went through high school, you were president of your class, you continued in leadership roles. And I would commend you. I remember two years ago, when you said, "I'm going to be running for Assembly, and I'm going to start now." And for anyone who wants to run for a public office, I would suggest start early, run hard, engage your entire family if possible, and hope for a great outcome. And you did that. So I want to applaud your tenacity, your perseverance, and also indicate that when we come to Sacramento, we expect a great deal of care and attention. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Liz. Next, we'll do the, yeah, was there, you want to speak?
So, Assemblymember Berman, we had a privilege of serving together in IBRC. And I knew back then you were going to go far. You did amazing work in IBRC. I know you've been doing amazing work in Sacramento. So thank you so much for stepping up to the plate and serving us. I really appreciate it.
Anyone else? No. And now, we'll do the resolution for Patrick Burt, our former mayor. Karen, would you like to read that?
It'd be my honor to do so, thank you. Whereas Patrick Burt was first elected to the City Council in 2007, and served as mayor in 2010 and 2016. And whereas, throughout his time on the City Council, Pat served on all of the council committees, and was chair of the Finance Committee 2009 and 2013, Policy and Services Committee 2015, Council Appointed Officers Committee 2015, and the City School Liaison Committee 2008. Whereas, Pat also served on many regional boards and committees, including the Peninsula Cities Consortium. Hold on, there's a long list here. Because he's been a very busy contributor to this community. The San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority, the Caltrain Policymakers Committee, the Santa Clara County Emergency Preparedness Council, and the Santa Clara Valley Water District Joint Recycled Water Advisory Committee. And whereas, as a council member and mayor, Pat applied his extensive experience as a Planning and Transportation Commissioner, 1998 to 2007, to assist in thoughtful decision-making regarding complex potential zoning amendments and project review, and has been outspoken in his support for the inclusion of native landscapes as an integral part of project requirements. And whereas, Pat has consistently supported the health and prosperity of the citizens of Palo Alto by assisting in the formation of Project Safety Net, which addresses the social and emotional well-being of our youth, advocated for increasing the HISRAP funding, which helps the less fortunate in our community, and participated in the creation of the Healthy Cities/Healthy Communities Initiative. And whereas, Pat has had a leading role in infrastructure investments, including his involvement in the creation of the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission, which has led to the development of today's transportation programs, and his support for increased investment in the city's street maintenance program, which dramatically improved the pavement condition index from 72 to 82, on track to reach the goal of 85 by 2019. And whereas, as a champion for a transit-rich environment, Pat has lent his vision to the creation of the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, as well as the bicycle and pedestrian transportation plan, and has, for many years, been a strong promoter of the expansion of Palo Alto's bicycle network, understanding it as a greener, healthier, and faster means of getting around. And whereas, Pat has been a leader on the advancement of Palo Alto's environmental sustainability through the creation of the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, often known as the SCAP, renewable energy and zero-waste plans, as well as the efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which resulted in moving Palo Alto to 100% carbon-neutral electric utility. And whereas, Pat's leadership has been a positive influence on the continued growth and progress of our community. And his lasting contributions will be seen and felt for many years to come. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of, that the Council of the City of Palo Alto hereby commends the outstanding public service of Patrick Burt, and gratefully records both its appreciation and the appreciation of the cities, excuse me, the citizens and businesses of this community for his meritorious service and commitment as a Palo Alto mayor and council member. And I'd like to make just a few comments, if I could, just a few personal comments. So I'm going to put, today happens to be my birthday, and I'm going to put something. Somebody left me a little present today at my doorstep, and many people will know what this is about, but this is a little donkey. And I've known Pat for some 20 years, 20-plus years probably. We go back to University South Neighborhood Association. We worked together on both Sofa One and Sofa Two. We were colleagues and allies often on the Planning and Transportation Commission. We've been allies often and colleagues on the City Council. And much of that time, we've also been friends. And I really appreciate that relationship, and I'm sure it will be an ongoing relationship. And I also, more recently, really, for the representatives from Barron Park Neighborhood and for the city more broadly, appreciate both Pat's and Sally Bima's support and participation in helping to bring Perry back to Palo Alto. And I did note that it also made one of the more uplifting comments in the Palo Alto Weekly for the year-end comment, so, Pat, hee-haw.
Yeah, I just briefly want to say, Pat's really been a resource for me, somewhat of a mentor. You've been really generous with your time and your ideas, and I just wanted to thank you for that. Don't be a stranger. I hope it's a friendship we can maintain. And just thank you for your many, many years of community service.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Niss.
Pat, I'm trying to see where you are. Why don't you stand up too? You know, I just hate to talk about somebody who's sitting down, really. So I have thoroughly enjoyed working with, I've really enjoyed working with Pat. But especially, I enjoy our other conversations, which have revolved around what he does for a living, what I've done in the past as well. And I think one of the things that we have become is friends, and I really appreciate that. But I too have a token for Pat, because he's an adamant bike rider, absolutely adamant. And most of you know I'm an adamant non-bike rider. So I recently got this at one of the public health meetings. You all remember, I have a background in public health. I should ride a bike, but I promise you, I do get exercise. So I have this for you, Pat. If you'd come on up, this goes on your bike. And it not only flashes, it also does fast flash, it does a solid one, you can even turn it off. Thanks, Pat, for all your service, by the way. It's been enormous. And Pat has done the regional outreach, I think, as much as any of us have. And I really appreciate that. It makes a difference. I know Larry Moody would say that, especially when we talk about the creeks, and where we have finally gotten to a point that our creeks will be protected, and our nearby communities will really benefit from that. Thanks.
Councilmember Walbach.
Just wanted to say thank you. There's not a ton I can add beyond what's already been said. But similar to, as with Councilmember Berman, and maybe even more so, I appreciate that you've been a great mentor to a lot of us, especially those of us in the freshman class, what was the freshman class, for the last two years of the council. I know that over the last couple of years, you and I have passionately agreed where we did, and passionately disagreed where we didn't. But I know that it was always about the policy, never personal, and always because we cared a lot about the future of Palo Alto, like everybody here. And also take this opportunity to say, welcome to the new members. I know that you're all here for the same reason, which is, we love Palo Alto, and we want to make it even better over the next few years. So thanks, Pat, for setting that example.
Councilmember Coop.
I too want to thank Councilmember and Mayor Burt, especially when I started the Emergency Preparedness Program and helping me further Quakeville. I don't know how many of you remember that, but it was camping in the parks in case of emergencies. But you really helped me get that off and take emergency preparedness in the city to the next level. I really appreciate that. And along the way, also, all your guidance through all the different issues. Thank you so much.
And Pat, I just wanted to say that I've enjoyed serving as your vice mayor, and I really appreciate all that you've done for Palo Alto. And I got to say, you're one of the smartest people I've ever known. And you do a really, a really good job on the policy stuff. And the work on the creek stuff, I think, is exemplary. And we really owe you a lot on the creek stuff. So thank you for your service. All right. Councilmember DuBois, would you like to read?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words. I'm actually not going to read all the "whereas's" and "wherefore's." Greg, there's a bunch of official language here coming your way. Greg's been on the council since 2008. And before that, he served on the school board for four years. So you've served our community for a long time, and you've served us very well. While he was on council, he chaired the Finance Committee. I think you were on the Finance Committee five times, Policy and Services a couple of years. You were on most of our city committees. And regionally, you served on A-BAG and the Santa Clara Water District. I think we're losing our only PhD on council tonight. Greg has consistently brought a unique viewpoint. He digs into the data, and he really looks for cause and effect. And I think you've used data to make informed decisions, and really shed new light on issues going kind of beyond the surface level. So I personally have appreciated those insights, and I'm going to miss those contributions. Greg has consistently been a voice for quality-of-life issues in residents on council. I don't know how many times I've heard, parties involved should pay their fair share. But that's a refrain that's good to hear. Greg's been a consistent supporter of sustainability issues and environmental issues throughout his tenure. And so Greg, I and the rest of the council want to commend you for your public service, and give you thanks and appreciation for being such a strong contributing member of our community. Thanks.
A couple of things that I wanted to add. One is that although it's easy for us to pigeonhole each other, and easy for us to know, or think we know, what's going on with somebody else's head, I was never really sure going into a meeting, not because Greg was indecisive, but because he kept his own council. He would listen to people, but he would have an open mind, and he would come to what he felt was the right decision every single time. And that meant that we'd have to work to get your vote. If I wanted you as the fifth vote on something that was narrow, I'd have to work really hard. But I'd have to make the case. I'd have to use logic. I couldn't just say, "pretty please." And I appreciate that. And I think that's important, because, you know, as much as politics and governance is about people, it's really about setting good policies for the future of Palo Alto. Since I'm not going to be able to pick your brain up here on the dais or in the back room anymore, for those of you who don't know, Greg lives right around the corner from me. Please don't, please don't be surprised if I come knocking on your door to pick your brain in the future.
Vice Mayor Niss.
You know, Greg, I'm going to ask you to do what others have done. You know, stand up when we talk about you. It's much, much more fun. First of all, thank you. Greg comes to us with a background in economics, and has utilized that very effectively during his time on the council. It makes a big difference when somebody brings a particular discipline to that which they are going to do on the council. And Greg, yours is decidedly, a very intense background in economics, which I have appreciated. But one more thing that I wanted to mention, because you and I are part of a very select group of people. The group that first served this community on the school board, before you came and ran for the council. So you and I have discussed that before. And I think that there are probably only four or five people in this community that have actually done that. So you've done your service. You've done it at the school board level, and you've done it at the city council level. And we owe you a great debt of gratitude, and a great big thank you. So appreciate that.
It's been my privilege to serve with Councilmember Schmidt, and it was my honor to have Councilmember Schmidt be the vice mayor when I had the privilege of being mayor. And I think Councilmember Walbach said it very well. It's, you have a voracious appetite for information. And oftentimes, it comes in the form of data, but just a voracious appetite for information. And sometimes, you know, I would ask you, like, "how did you know that? Where did you learn that?" Well, I was reading some, it would be some obscure document, somewhere or other. But Greg reads all of this, and retains so much of it, and has, I have to say, an enviable filing system too, because you will pull out documents to bring to a meeting for something that we discussed three years ago. It's just, it's enviable, and I hope you'll give us a tour sometime of how you do your filing, because it has kept us all on board and on track. You've always had at the forefront service of the community, and balancing the interests of residents as well, and with those of corporate interests and business interests. And I think the community well recognizes that and respects that. And I think that's part of what the recognition you heard in terms of the applause. So take that in. Thank you very much. It's been my honor to serve with you.
Greg, thank you for doing this all these years. I can say that it's been an absolute pleasure trying to keep up with you on things. And I learned a lot from you, so thank you for that. And thank you for encouraging me to do this, right? And best wishes. Thanks.
Greg, I also wanted to say, I really enjoyed serving with you. And I think back to when I was first elected to council, and we served on finance together. It was so helpful having you go through the books and tell me exactly where the bodies were buried, and where we should look for stuff, and, I know, right? And you really were encyclopedic knowledge of that kind of stuff. And it was a great resource for me. And I've really enjoyed serving with you. And the other thing I wanted to say about Greg, he's a genuinely nice guy. I always enjoy having coffee with Greg. I always enjoy having lunch with Greg. And, you know, we're going to miss you on the council, so. All right, now we go to the public, unless, I don't see any other lights, everyone's spoken. So we have a number of public speakers. You'll each get three minutes. The first one is Joe Semidion, if you'd like to come up, and you're speaking to all items three through five.
And how fitting that I should be limited to three minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Especially after that committee we served on.
Let me just say, congratulations to both you and Supervisor, now Vice Mayor Niss. Congratulations on your new roles. Congratulations to all of you who've been elected and re-elected this last go-around. Thanks to all of you who continue to serve on the council. But I am here tonight, really, to say thanks to the three outgoing members of the council who you've just recognized.
for any one of these three. I feel quite certain that we will see and hear plenty from all of them. We know that Assemblymember Berman has a defined role in a new venue. I'm looking forward to seeing what role former Mayor Burt and Councilmember Schmidt take on. But it is not just because, as some of you have suggested, that as council members, they fought for the things they believed in and that they fought for the things they thought were in the best interest of this community. But also, as I've worked with and watched them over the years, it is because they listened, they learned, and they understood by virtue of the way they approached their job. Palo Alto is a demonstrably better community by virtue of that effort. And I want to say thank you on behalf of 1,918,044 residents of Santa Clara County this evening. Thank you all three gentlemen. One, two, three.
Annette Glankoff.
Ceremonial hardware to follow, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Annette Glankoff to be followed by Alenka Villarreal.
What an honor to follow Joe. Well, first of all, congratulations to all the new council members. Welcome and lots of luck. But tonight, I'm really speaking to thank Pat Burt. Pat, I don't want you to stand behind me, so maybe you could just come up here. I'd like to formally thank you for all the very years of your service, starting with University South President, on to Planning Commission, City Council, and in your present role as Mayor. Thanks for everything you've done for so long to make Palo Alto such a special place for all of us to live in. Of course, I wanted to call out a couple of things that involve me personally, of course. Emergency preparedness. Thank you for all of your support in making the Palo Alto Volunteer Program for handling disasters and emergencies in the best practices go-to model. I want to highlight all your work in the early strategy meetings on the feasibility implementation with our city staff. Judy Kleinberg is here, Canduca, and many, many others. Your support in 2004 was key to making emergency prep a city council priority and to maintaining it for a priority for four years. That made all the difference. You were a strong advocate for the first phases of our block preparedness coordinator program and funding for it. And you've been a champion ever since, participating in events and in our annual awards ceremonies. And thank you for honoring your commitment on the time when you could have met President Obama, but you chose to be with us. And I know you got the opportunity later, so to make up for it. Second, you were instrumental with leadership Palo Alto. You were part of the effort in the 2008, 2009 frame to bring back leadership Palo Alto to our community after its demise. And your participation, advice, and support made the new and the revised dynamic Leadership 2.0 a program of reality. Your presentation on how things work in Palo Alto, the Palo Alto process, is always a highlight for the new members of the class, our fellows, and neighborhood associations. With your background, who else could appreciate the value of a neighborhood association? That these are the key ingredients for building community. Thanks for all your support over the years for listening and to support for many of the Palo Alto neighborhoods' ideas and requests. Finally, for all these efforts and more, I thank you. It's difficult for me to imagine a council without you, with your amazing depth of knowledge, eloquence, and visionary ideas. I know boards and commissions all over the state and the county are going to be knocking at your door, offering you more opportunities. So, we all look forward to see what the bright future will bring you. Thanks again. We'll miss you.
That's very nice.
Alenka Villarreal to be followed by Martin Summer.
Alenka Hadley.
Alenka Hadley, Martin Summer. To be followed by Nadia Nayak.
Good evening. I have a little bit for everybody here. Karen, first, I want to say happy birthday. And nothing personal, but from one Missourian to another, when you held up the little statue, I thought for sure is our state motto, which is the Missouri Mule. No offense, of course, with all due respect. So, and for the new electees, there's a saying that says, "If it rains on your wedding, you will become rich." So, hopefully, that's a good start for you. And then, let me just turn here. So, Pat Burt, or I should say Mayor Pat Burt, thank you very much for all your work on, on, let's see, I even choked up over it. Thank you for all your work on the rail projects. I encourage you to keep involved. I didn't know you had other offers out there, but I encourage you to keep involved. You don't have to be an elected official to make a real difference. So, thank you. And honestly, I like our upgrade solution. I look forward to an electrified Caltrain and high-speed rail coming through. So, we'll see how that goes. And next is Greg Schmidt, which, from what I understand, your, my wife is from Hamburg and your relatives are maybe Hamburg as well. I learned this on July 4th this year, and there's a little bit of a story here. It won't take long, but I too love to ride and I was out doing a mountain bike ride in the Roster Derr Preserve. And was going pretty fast and took a jump a little higher and longer than what I normally do and stuff. And it turns out, I crashed. And as I'm laying on the ground with three broken bones, Greg Schmidt and his lovely wife come up and they stand me back up again and, and help me get back to my truck. And, and I didn't even realize it was them when, you know, they had their sun hats on and stuff, until we started talking. And so, when I reflected back on that, I just want to say that watching Greg over the years, it's truly a reflection of his personal touch on the city and, and the caring that he put into the years that he was here. So, thank you. And Mark, I didn't have a chance to work with you, but I hope to in the future at some point. But congratulations on your new seat. So, there you go.
Hi. First of all, congratulations to Mayor Sharp and to Vice Mayor Niss and welcome to the newbies. I'm sure we'll be seeing you a lot. I wanted to say on behalf of card, for those of you who don't know what card is, you will soon learn on the council. But we just wanted to say thanks to everybody. Thanks to Greg Schmidt for all of your work when we started as fellow data junkies. We appreciate how you dove into those crazy spreadsheets the way that we did, so we thank you for that. And now, with someone in Berman are passed and crossed as often, but now that you will be in Sacramento, they probably will more often. So, welcome to the challenge. And of course, Pat, I feel awkward also talking to you backwards, but I guess we'll do this all night. What can we say? You, more than anybody, I think, helped us become the active citizens that we became and the reason why the rest of the council now knows who we are. So, thank you for that. You have been helpful in doing citizen advisory and the rail committee and so many things. Long-range planning, but your regional leadership, you know, the meetings that you helped us set up with working from San Francisco all the way down to San Jose are really, you know, not about just keeping it local, but thinking really broadly, have really impacted everyone. And you have just worked tirelessly to help citizen activists like me, accidental activists, basically, get pulled into the thread and not be able to back away from things. So, we thank you profoundly for that. We're excited. Your tireless work has now got us the money for Measure B, so we can continue to have great conversations in the community, which we certainly are looking forward to doing. And all I can say, and this is mostly on behalf of Elizabeth, right? You don't just talk the talk, you bike the bike. And we thank you for that. So, thanks from all of us. We'll miss you.
Arthur Keller.
To be followed by Lisa Chung.
Thank you. So, first, congratulations to Mayor Sharp on your election as mayor and to Vice Mayor Liz Niss on your selection as Vice Mayor and also on your reelection. I am interested in your comment about the wheels on the bus turning round and round because we're about to lose the 88 bus, which I'm sure that Penny Ellison will talk more about. So, we need your support in making sure that we keep our bus service. And congratulations to Lydia Koo, Adrian Fine, and Rex Tanaka on your election to the council. I remember that no one campaigned on tall buildings over 50 feet and no one campaigned for more office space. So, I expect that that's where we'll be. No more, not more tall office space, not much more, not tall buildings. Congratulations to Mark Berman on your election to the Assembly. And thanks to Pat Burt for all your service. I served with you on the Planning Commission some years ago. And I recall that one of the early things you did in your service to the city was work on the sofa plan. And I'd like to see a plan for the Frye's site that is as high-quality as a sofa plan. And I think that that, we need to get started on that now, because otherwise Frye's going to go away and we don't want the developer telling us what should be built there. We want the community to decide what should be built there. Thanks to Greg Schmidt for your service, starting with the school board. And I'll point out one thing that Greg did when joining the school board, is that he was talking about school capacity. At that time, our enrollment was going down and down and they were about to close one, down to one high school and one middle school. And he said, "No, it's turning around. We're getting more enrollment." And that was very prescient. We've seen the enrollment go up and up and up. We've seen it continue to go up. It's now settling back because we haven't built as much housing in the last few years. But if we go back to grow big on housing, will see the school capacity once again be an issue. And that's why I think the comp plan should have a policy in there to require that we consider school capacity with our, with the, with our, our policies and our, our regulations. Not within, we can't do it with individual projects, but we can do it for policies and for, for our laws. So, I think, I think that those are the things we should think about in the future. Thanks you to Greg. Thank you to Pat. Thank you to Mark. And I look forward to a very collegial process in the next two years. And I, good luck to all of us for what happened in the national election. May 2017 not be as bad as we fear.
Hi, I'm Lisa Chung, Senator Jerry Hill's liaison to the city of Palo Alto. Congratulations, Mayor Sharp, and your selection and Vice Mayor Niss. And congratulations to councilmembers Fine, Tanaka, and Koo. It's great to see a new era now in 2017. I too, I brought hardware. And it's a little embarrassing, because I only brought two out of three pieces of hardware. And that's because you could probably make your own resolution, but I brought Assemblymember The district office where Senator Hill has his office is right next door to Assemblymember Mullins' office. And so, recently, one of our, one of our comrades in arms at the, in Mullins' office just recently joined your staff and we are sorry to see him go, but it's good to see a Palo Alto and return down to the south part of the district. First, I would like to pull out for Mayor Burt, just past Mayor Burt, a resolution. And if you'd like to come up, I'd like to present it. It, I don't know how to do this. It has all the whereas's that I think probably are maybe as fulsome as the one from the city of Palo Alto, perhaps not, since your record is much more complete than the ones that we had. But I want to thank you for your leadership and your service. And I also want to say, probably the thing that kind of came out in a lot of this, besides working with you on San Francisco Creek and the Caltrain work that we've done statewide, is you've certainly put your stamp on this city in making it a leader sustainability-wise and environmentally-wise. That should be duly noted and recognized. And congratulations. As was noted, he is probably the only PhD, and we have noted the honorable Greg Schmidt PhD on our resolution. Again, our resolution may not be as fulsome as the city of Palo Alto's, but I want to say that one of the things that did come out, that your stamp on the city has been both tangible, such as the addition to the Foothills Park, and also the less tangible, which is your ability to use data to inform and drive decisions of the, of the city. And that is not as much appreciated, but should be very much recognized. And we thank you for your service. Happy New Year to all, yes.
Thank you. Sandra Slater to be followed by Penny Ellison.
So, first of all, congratulations to the new council and to Greg, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Vice Mayor. And I just tonight wanted to take this opportunity to express my deep appreciation for the outgoing members of the council. Tonight, we're watching the kernel of democracy, the peaceful turnover of power, with the knowledge that everyone here this evening has made the commitment to make our city even better. The call to public service is done out of a desire to serve the public interest and to serve the larger community. So, it's with really tremendous gratitude that I offer my remarks this evening. The city council reflects our values, concerns, and opportunities. And I'd like to implore every resident of Palo Alto to come down to council on Monday nights and see the hard work, dedication, and thoughtful deliberations this fine group of citizens who are sacrificing their Monday nights and sometimes Tuesday mornings and not to mention the various committee and task force meetings, liaison responsibilities, and so much more to make our fantastic city even better. We all know that you didn't make that sacrifice for the money, but for a profound sense of duty and responsibility to oversee the enormously complex task of running a city and wanting to make a difference in our collective lives. And thank you also to the staff who just does an astounding, wonderful job on every level. Every, every interaction I've had with staff has been just really, really terrific. A special thanks to our outgoing Mayor Burt, who's been a champion of sustainability and environmental causes for as long as I can remember, from bike and pet infrastructure to our SCAP, to shepherding our utility, to carbon neutrality, and of course, to the Cool City Challenge. He's been a leading, he's been leading the charge and we and the planet are grateful for tireless commitment to a green Palo Alto. We lose a great environmental leader tonight at council and sincerely hope that you consider as, continue as a private citizen to further our cause for sustainable Palo Alto and beyond. Thank you so much, Pat. And to Mark Berman, who's put in the hard work to ensure that our quality of life remains second to none. Mark understands the importance of measured and thoughtful growth and has served our city with distinction, enormous dedication, courtesy, and consideration. His work on the Infrastructure Committee and his interest in youth has left a wonderful legacy. He's off to bigger or at least different pastures. And I know he'll keep up the great work he started as a champion of environmental issues and affordable housing and better transit here in Palo Alto. Also, his dedication to education, smart growth, and social equity. So, thank you so much, Mark. And to Greg Schmidt, whose quiet counsel is always thoughtful and deliberate. Thanks to Greg for your support for the SCAP and for the Green Gas Initiative recently. Your direction on the finance committee was so helpful to reframe the initiative. I know we'll be seeing you around these chambers for years to come and always welcome your perspective and judgment. I leave you tonight quickly with one, an inspired quote from former President Clinton. Citizen service is the very American idea that we meet our challenges not as isolated individuals, but as members of a true community. With all of us working together, our mission is nothing less than to spark a renewed sense of obligation, a new sense of duty, and a new season of service. Thank you. (applause) to our SCAP, to shepherding our utility, to carbon neutrality, and of course, to the Cool City Challenge. He's been leading the charge, and we and the planet are grateful for tireless commitment to a green Palo Alto. We lose a great environmental leader tonight at council, and sincerely hope that you continue as a private citizen to further our cause for a sustainable Palo Alto and beyond. Thank you so much, Pat. And to Mark Berman, who's put in the hard work to ensure that our quality of life remains second to none. Mark understands the importance of measured and thoughtful growth, and has served our city with distinction, enormous dedication, courtesy, and consideration. His work on the Infrastructure Committee and his interest in youth has left a wonderful legacy. He's off to bigger, or at least different, pastures. And I know he'll keep up the great work he started as a champion of environmental issues and affordable housing and better transit here in Palo Alto. Also, his dedication to education, smart growth, and social equity. So thank you so much, Mark. And to Greg Schmidt, whose quiet council is always thoughtful and deliberate. Thanks to Greg for your support for the SCAP and for the Green Gas Initiative. Recently, your direction on the Finance Committee was so helpful to reframe the initiative. I know we'll be seeing you around these chambers for years to come, and always welcome your perspective and judgment. I leave you tonight quickly with an inspired quote from former President Clinton. "Citizen service is the very American idea, that we meet our challenges not as isolated individuals, but as members of a true community. With all of us working together, our mission is nothing less than to spark a renewed sense of obligation, a new sense of duty, and a new season of service." Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Penny Ellison. I'd like to take a minute to say thank you first to our incoming City Councilmembers. Thank you for your new commitment of service to our city, and I invite you to come and talk to the Safe Roots to School representatives about the work that we're doing for the children in our community. To our outgoing council members, Mayor Bird, Councilmembers Schmidt and Berman, thank you for accepting this responsibility and for working so hard to do your best to hear us and to represent us. I know I'm not the only person here who feels grateful for the generous gift of your time and energy and talent, but I truly thank you for that. All of you have given your support to Safe Roots to School over many years, enabling our great success, increasing students to choose active, sustainable school commutes more often. On behalf of the Palo Alto Council of PTAs, I thank you for that. I'm actually emotional about this. Sorry to see you go. And finally, I want to give special thanks also to Mayor Bird, who stands out as a very, very long-term stalwart champion for Safe Roots to School. Even before Safe Roots to School was officially established in 2006, you recognized and embraced the importance of safe school commutes. You took time to learn about and understand the developmental and physical differences of children that make this program necessary. You rode your bike with us at events. You helped our community establish what is today one of the nation's most successful Safe Roots to School programs. And we know that we couldn't have done it without your leadership, all of your leadership, and support during your service on the Planning Commission and City Council. The result of that support is thousands of new students in Palo Alto walking, bicycling, riding the bus, and carpooling to school more often. We've grown the ranks of alternative commuters by an order of magnitude. As a volunteer for this program, my heart leaps when I see fleets of young people on bicycles flowing into our secondary school campuses. We thank you. We thank all of you for making that possible.
First, I would like to congratulate the new council and the new mayor, Greg Scharf, and Vice Mayor Liz Niss. And especially, I would like to congratulate Lydia Guo and Liz, now with two of you, plus Karen. So we've got three women serving on the council. So congratulation. And also, I would like to congratulate Greg, Tanaka, and Lydia Guo for becoming the two, you know, serving two Chinese-Americans serving on the council. So congratulation. So next, I would like to speak on behalf of Chinese-American, no, Chinese community. I would like to thank Mayor Bird for his outreach to the Chinese community. And so the first, Mayor Bird is very approachable and very personable. So the first time I met, no, maybe I should explain a little bit. So my name's Deborah Sen, and I'm a co-founder of Palo Alto Chinese Parent Club three years ago. So our goal is to engage Chinese community, which is a growing community, everybody knows, Chinese immigrant community, and to engage with the community and to become, you know, to become a bigger contributor to the city. And when I explained it to Mayor Bird two years ago, during I think Lydia's campaign, you know, one of the meetings, I met Mayor Bird, and I explained to him, he's in full support. And then he confirmed me, said, "Okay, I took Chinese class in my high school." And he speaks on Chinese to me. So, and then he said, "I have a Chinese friend." So, you know, so now we feel very, instantly feel very comfortable with him. And later, we, early last year, 2016, the Chinese community put out, you know, also worked with the city, city as a cosponsor, put out the inaugural Chinese New Year Fair. And it was an enormous success. We have 1,200, 1,200, you know, people attend the meeting, attend the fair. And we invited Mayor Bird to come and to give us a speech. And just last, yeah. So we really appreciate that. And then this year, we put all the flyer on your desk, and I hope all of you will come. And the new mayor, he will speak in the fair. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruben Abrica, Vice Mayor, City of East Palo Alto. And I want to definitely congratulate all the new council members, the new officers, and also the outgoing members of the council and the new Assemblymember from Palo Alto, but from our area too. I represent the City of East Palo Alto on the Joint Powers Authority for the San Francisco Creek, and I have done that for quite a few number of years. I think I may be one of the oldest-serving members at this point. So I have a little bit of the history on it. I live by the creek. And so I want to say a few words in particular to honor Pat Bird for your work. I know that, you know, everyone does great service, Pat, because I did have the honor of working with him the last few years. You know, I want to say that working on regional issues is absolutely necessary, and it's also never easy. It's not an easy thing. But the last couple of years in particular, I think we've made some milestones on the San Francisco Creek. And I want to say that, you know, Pat Bird has been a very outstanding member, has made many contributions at key points. I think all of us bring our experience and our ideas. But we did have a couple of very rough years with state agencies. One in particular, I forget the name of it, I want to forget the name of it, but, you know, very important agency, because we had to deal with flood management, with environmental issues, with recreational issues, with many different things. But I very much appreciated Pat Bird's, you know, studious efforts, always being very well-prepared, doing his homework, asking tough questions. And among ourselves, we at times have disagreed, and that's part of the process. But in the end, we worked as a team. And so I'm very happy that before he stepped down, Pat Bird was able to be there. We were there in the groundbreaking. So that work is now finally taking place, and we look forward to, you know, the continuing work. But definitely from the bottom of my heart, because I've been at it for a long time, I really appreciate the work that Pat Bird did, as well as others. But, you know, great colleague, and I know Councilmember Romero's around here, he served also as the alternate, and I know he feels the same way. And definitely, congratulations to Palo Alto for being a good neighbor. Thank you. That's it.
One more. Come on up. No worries. Come on up. It's perfectly fine. So Carlos Romero from East Palo Alto.
Yes, there is one final item that I think the Vice Mayor forgot to mention. By the way, congratulations to the new Vice Mayor, the Mayor, and those of you who are newly elected. In terms of Pat Bird, Pat had, whether it was the soul, the foresight, the integrity, to reach out to East Palo Alto some time ago and ask us how we could work together to potentially solve a very critical water issue we have in East Palo Alto. Now granted, you have a colleague's memo that is making its way now through your process. But we would not have gotten there had it not been for Pat unilaterally, and there hasn't been a city on the peninsula that's done this, reaching out to us and saying, "Look, this just isn't fair." Historically, East Palo Alto's gotten the short end of the stick. Is there some way that we can look at resources and try indeed to fix that issue that is presently vexing us in East Palo Alto? And again, had it not been for Pat, and Pat, I won't give you a hug, and I won't shake your hand because I have a cold, but certainly, un gran abrazo, as we would say in Spanish, to him for, again, this kind of deep soul sense of equity and justice that I think he brought forward in that discussion with us. Thank you very much, Pat.
So before we conclude, public comment. I wanted to call Supervisor Semidian and just say, did you have some thing from the county you wanted to present tonight? Did you say that? So if you want to do it now, that'd be great.
It can wait.
Okay, so you don't want to do it now. All right. In that case, we'll move on, and we have some, let's see. I think the next thing is, we actually vote on all three resolutions. So if I could have a motion to approve. All right, it's moved and seconded. Please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. All communications. So before we do all communications, though, we need, so before we do all communications, we now need to present the plaques. And the first one is to Mayor Bird.
Well, given that I stand between us and the refreshments, I'll try and make it short. But it really has been a privilege to serve this community for nine years in the Planning Commission, and nine years in the council, and time before that, and neighborhood leadership. I wouldn't have done it if it wasn't such a wonderful community to live in, to raise our children, and to be part of. We certainly always have our great challenges going forward. They continue to evolve. Yesterday's challenges are not the same as tomorrow's. But I do really commend our community and the council for what we're now engaged in, in our comprehensive plan, and our sustainability, and climate action plans that are building on the work of prior councils and the community beforehand, to make this a community that will continue to pass on what we value to our future generations. And that's the real challenge. And this council is facing a lot of difficult pressures from the regional and local growth and changes. And we must look at how we can both adapt and evolve and embrace the qualities that we so value. So I look forward to continuing to participate as a private citizen and working with all of you, and wish you all the best working on our collective challenges.
Yeah, I've thought a lot about this night after nine years of leaving the council. I'd like to follow up the statements that have been made by my colleagues, to thank my colleagues on the council for working together, to thank the staff for providing wealth of information on every issue we've talked about, and for the support they've earned in the community by carrying out good government. But I would like to just say a word about what I think is key about this night and about local government. Local government is special. I remember 35 years ago, I had four kids in elementary school. They had closed down 10 elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools. We were meeting with parents and saying, "God, what's going to happen to our schools, funding of schools, selling off school property?" Someone tapped me on the shoulder and said, "Well, why don't you go to the school board and tell them what you think? They're the ones who make decisions." And I remember thinking, "Go to the school board? Well, why not?" And I remember that first night, I walked in there, looked up the rules, three minutes, certain part of the agenda. They were very busy. Who am I to come here? I remember nervously getting up and saying in my three minutes what I could. And the board chair, when I finished, smiled, looked at me, "Thanks so much for your input." I remember that feeling I had leaving the meeting, saying, "Gee, you know, even if they don't do what I say, the chance to get up and express that made me feel that it was worth it." I remember doing the same thing at the council 10, 12 years ago about traffic growth, quality of life, speaking for three minutes, sometimes speaking for two minutes, going to ARB meetings early in the morning, signing petitions, advocating. I remember sitting there at night, frustrating. At 11 o'clock, vote goes against what you said. Leaning over to the one other person in the room, saying, "Gee, I think you have to be on the council to really have an impact." Got a quizzical look for that. But another time at 11 o'clock, when the vote came, one of the council members said, "I'm going to change my vote because of something that people said tonight." Well, I finally, with friends and neighbors, ran for council and got on the council. And I remember it was a night like tonight. I started out there, took the oath, walked up to the dais. And I said, "How am I going to retain that feeling I had of people coming to speak to you, that it's important and vital, key to them?" So I got an agenda. I remember reading somewhere that if you write something, you retain it longer than if you just listen or you later hear it. So I got an agenda for each meeting I went to, and I wrote down the name of every speaker who came. And I wrote five to 10 words about what they had said, what was different or unique of their thing. Now, did I agree with them all? No. I voted for some, against some. But I had to, in my own mind, say, if I voted against someone, did I have a good reason for doing it? I went through my sheets the other day, figured out there was about 1,000 people who come to speak each year. That means almost 9,000 people the time I've been here. And that is the basic deal of local government. We agree to make decisions in public. We have the same information the public has, and we will listen to anyone who comes and has something to say about that. From my own experience, I know it's important to them. They feel it. They know it. They experience it. They feel it, they know it, they experience it. So that basic deal of local government has been my pleasure to participate in over the last nine years. And I thank my colleagues, and I thank the people of Palo Alto for allowing me to do that.
Well, first, I want to thank staff. You've been rightfully thanked many times tonight, but thank you for all the hard work you do, the constant politeness with which you treat everybody, both council members and the public. And a lot of folks don't realize how available you guys are, both to members of the public, a small subset of the public that emails you directly, sees it when you reply at 11 o'clock at night on a Tuesday, or 2:00 PM on a Sunday. But you guys work tirelessly to improve our community and make Palo Alto the amazing place it is to live, and so thank you for that. I want to congratulate the new council members that just got elected, and thank Councilmember Koo for the organizational chart here. Palo Alto residents, for those who couldn't see, Palo Alto residents are first, and council is second. And let me just say, at least for tonight in this chamber, it's nice to be the boss again. And I know that'll change as soon as I step outside, but I have a couple of things I wanted to tell all of you. No. And, but, you know, to the new council members especially, the ability, the opportunity to serve your community is really amazing, and, you know, for me, and I know for a couple of council members, it's especially moving because we grew up here, and you get to go back to the school, the elementary school, or the middle school, or the high school that you went to, and talk to students, and try to be a role model. And I'm really proud of a lot of the accomplishments that we had, some that I'll be able to look at for decades. It's been noted a couple of times that I served on the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission, and I know that there are a couple of I-Brook Commissioners here also tonight, or they were, they might have gone home already. But we're going to build a new public safety building in Palo Alto, which is something that had been talked about for decades and is now finally being accomplished. We're going to build two new fire stations in Palo Alto that were originally built in 1959 and 1963, and those are things that I'll be able to drive around town and look at for decades to come. But for all those decades, it's the memories of, you know, much smaller interactions that I had with folks that I'll hold closest to my heart. It was people who reached out to me because they were running a preschool, and they were having trouble getting through the Palo Alto process to be able to increase the preschool spots, the desperately needed preschool spots that we needed here in Palo Alto, and they called, and I was able to work with them and staff to find a creative solution to the hurdle that existed in front of them. It's the parents that have begun reaching out to me, and Adrian or Cora, you guys might have to take this on, when the sand in the playgrounds got too low for their kids, and they were worried about the safety of their kids, and they might fall and hit the side or hit the concrete. It was working with people to improve traffic intersections so that students had a safe way to cross the street to get to where they wanted to go to. So it's those kind of personal, the personal ways that we get to help members in our community that I am going to hold most dear from my time on the city council. I had a, that's right, I knew I had something I wanted to say to close it up. I was rushing out the house this afternoon and grabbed my wallet and grabbed my keys, and next to that is a tray that has all the pins that we collect as we serve on the Palo Alto City Council, and I saw this one that I'm wearing today, which is "For the Love of Palo Alto." And I think that just best sums up both the work that you all will put forth to improve the community. It sums up the reason that the chambers was packed tonight with people who care and love Palo Alto. It's the reason that, and only Councilmember Schmidt could actually have a tally of how many people come and talk at council meetings, but why 9,000 people have come to talk at council meetings during your nine years on council, it's because we all love Palo Alto. And we might come at it from different viewpoints, and we might have different ideas of what that should look like, but we all come to this chamber with the same motivation, which is to improve the community that we live in. It's a really amazing thing. It was an honor to be able to spend four years on council, and just want to thank the community for that opportunity. Thanks.
So we're almost getting to the end, but I want to tell them we actually have some more awards and plaques to give out. So this is the symbolic key to the city. So we're going to give those to our three retiring council members, and then for Mayor Bird, he gets a gavel, which he used once, I gather, as mayor. So I'm just going to come down and call you up, and just, we can do a photo. You'll have three minutes.
Congratulations, new council members, Koo, Tanaka, and Fine. Thank you all for all that you do for the community. Special thank you to Mayor Bird, Assemblymember Mark Berman. Your leadership on the Policy and Services Committee helped jumpstart a critical city investment and resources to address jet noise, which, as you all may know, has only escalated in importance for Palo Alto citizens. Thanks to the engagement of hundreds of Palo Alto residents and the city's efforts, a plan is underway to make changes to our airspace, and the first body to address the changes is an ad hoc subcommittee consisting of two members, or alternates from the recent Select Committee, or others yet to be named from each county and congressional district. As the operative word tonight was regional, it is imperative for Palo Alto to have an elected official seated at the ad hoc subcommittee to address high-stakes interests in the report recently issued by the Select Committee. Please identify a council member to contact Representatives Eschew, Spear, and Panetta to have a Palo Alto council member seated on the committee. Unlike any other time, this is crucial because the FAA and Congress are engaging cities to make changes to SFO arrivals. Several of the Select Committee recommendations are extremely important to us, and their prioritization by the FAA will make a huge difference. Thank you, and best of luck in your stewardship of the city. Congratulations.
Karen Porter to be followed by Penny Ellison.
Thank you. Many thanks to the outgoing council members, and particularly Mayor Bird, who I would often run into at fundraisers for other candidates, and I thought it was particularly generous of him to give of his time in that way. And congratulations and good luck to the new council. This year should be interesting. As many have noted, Palo Alto is a great city, but the elephant in the room, or in the sky, I should say, as Jennifer alluded to, is the increasing onslaught of the low-flying jets directly over Palo Alto. So while the items mentioned by Mayor Scharf are important, jet noise should be at the top of the list of priorities that the city should be addressing, as the overwhelming majority of people who have posted on the city's website have noted. This year is perhaps our one and only chance to make sure that the FAA takes action on the Select Committee's recommendations, and the city should play a leadership role in this effort among the other cities in the region, and with the esteemed and talented group of the new council, I am sure we will be well-served in this effort. Thank you so much, and best of luck.
Penny Ellison.
Thank you. This is just a brief announcement, actually, of a meeting. So today, the VTA Next Network Plan for bus service regionally was released, and it's very disappointing for Palo Alto. There is, we're going to see probably some cuts, looks like, and there are some upcoming community meetings where we can comment and take notice, and I hope our council members will participate. One of them is going to happen in this room on January 19th at 6:00 PM. It's an opportunity for citizens to come out and speak if you know somebody who rides the VTA 88 to school, or to the VA hospital, or perhaps back and forth to Stevenson House, or other places like that along these corridors. I hope that you will take a moment to come out and speak for yourself, or for the people you love who need these services in our community. So, and I hope that you will join us and learn more, and I hope we can work together on this the way we did in 2009, and maybe we can make some changes to this presently disappointing plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we adjourn, if any council members have any brief comments they'd like to make, don't feel like you're obligated to. Councilmember Wallback.
Just briefly, some folks asked last month if it was necessary in a community like Palo Alto to proactively address the threat of hate crimes. On December 12th, as we all know, we unanimously passed a resolution reaffirming Palo Alto's commitment to a diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protective community, and it said, among many other things, that Palo Alto rejects bigotry in all of its forms, specifically among them was listed antisemitism, and it also mentioned that Palo Alto does not tolerate hate crimes. I learned today from the local press, and also from our city staff, that community members have recently found swastikas and antisemitic messages scattered as vandalism across town, both on city and private property. I heard about two such swastikas myself last night from a friend via social media. It was about 10:30 at night, I was mad, so I drove over there and cleaned it up. Luckily, it was easy to do so, and I know that, and I've been pleased to see that, and learned that community members have also, you know, taken matters into their own hands to clean up when they've been able to, reported it to city staff, and city staff has also been cleaning them up. I hate to, you know, mention something that's somber before we go to our celebratory reception, but I do think it is worth noting, and I do think it's important that continuing the positive mood of this evening and the people in this room, that we do work together, that if we see any type of hate or bigotry in Palo Alto, that let's continue to reject it, address it immediately, and make sure that it finds no refuge here. And I do want to mention a couple of quick thank yous. Thank you to Palo Alto Police Department Officer Derek Souza, who came to the site of the vandalism last night, and was very polite and responsive even before he recognized that I was a member of the city council. And also, thank you to the residents who have reported and even taken matters into their own hands to clean up such vandalism, and thank you to the city staff for working on the rest of the cleanup efforts. Let's stay vigilant.
Vice Mayor Niss.
I want to underscore what Penny Ellison just said. As far as VTA, there is no question, they, I was with the VTA Policy Committee today, instead of using cutbacks, they're calling rescaling it. I would really encourage any of you who can come to the meeting that is on the 19th here in this room at 6:00, to come and really express your concern with the so-called scaling back that VTA may be doing. It's always difficult, I think Joe is still here, but it's very difficult at our end of the county to continuously keep service in place, and the only way you can do that is literally by coming and complaining and indicating that this is absolutely an unfair way for them to treat, especially the 88 bus, which is used extensively, not just by kids that are going and coming from Gunn, but many others in the community. So, just as what Greg said earlier tonight, Greg Schmidt, people will hear you, but it's really important for us to show up and to make sure that we are expressing that in such a way that they not only hear it, but they act on it. So I think we can put that out in one of our memos as well, so that people will forget, I will not forget, and will come that night.
Councilmember Koo.
First, thanks to everybody who came tonight, and thank you for the congratulations and the welcome. I did want to piggyback on what Deborah's saying from the Palo Alto Chinese Parents Club, and extend her invitation to everybody in the public to join us on our Chinese New Year, which is going to take place on February the 12th from 2:00 to 5:00. There's a lot of exciting things to see and learn about our community and our culture and traditions, so I hope you'll join us. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we have refreshments in the back, and the meeting is adjourned.